Call the board, the meeting to order at 7 and stand for the plan.
To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, amendments to the agenda, any amendments needed?
Yes, sir. Uh, we're using amendment to add labor relations to executive session. I need a motion.
I make a motion to add that under executive session, labor relations, 1 DSA 31281.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod. Anything else needed or that's it? Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Um, approval of the minutes from September 7?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 7th as written.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol to approve the September 7th minutes. Any corrections or changes? See, none, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, dog park discussion, um, so this agenda item is pertaining only to the permit, um, application. So I want to keep it to the permit and not rehash the whole dog park history. Um, so let's just keep our focus on the, the dog park permit. So then I want to get, turn it over to Joe to give kind of a, a little background where we're at. Um, permitting, guys?
We requested to have the dog park on the agenda. We didn't, yeah, I know there's been a lot of talk in social media and in the press. We do, we did prepare a statement.
Yep, I'm gonna ask the town manager to present to the select board. Go ahead, Joe.
So we did, uh, I guess it's been a couple of weeks now, we did finally get the total permit, the total cost of the permit, the wetland permit. Um, it comes to $8,645.25. This is what we've been waiting for, honestly, to see what, what really was, was gonna be the showstopper. Funding for this permit is, um, I imagine why we're here has become an issue. As what was said in social media, I did say that, hey, there is no good option for this. And I stand by that, there is no good option for this permit fee. It's almost $9,000 that was tossed onto the town and we didn't have an opportunity to budget for that amount. That's a lot of money for a small town. So I did say that and I stand by that. With that said though, it's not an undoable thing. Okay? Our options for funding this, which one of them is unpopular, and I understand that. And we'll get to it. Uh, first option would be to overexpend our airpark purchase services line. There's only about, I wanna say $1,500 in that line item. Uh, we could overexpend it and then just try to eat the $9,000 somewhere else in the budget. Though I don't like that option, and I understand the first quarter of the budget, it will be hard to do that. It's unforeseen thing to pop up. Uh, the town could also take this nine, uh, $8,600 out of grant match. We did receive a lot of generous donations, um, from not only people in Fairhaven but outside of Fairhaven. I feel that matching those donations with town match is an appropriate use of those funds. The most unpopular option would be to use existing dog park funds and then try to raise more funds. This would be difficult, but, um, it's an option. And the fourth, uh, fourth option that I came up with, and I'm sure there's a, a billion options we could do. But to keep it brief, we could use a combination of those options. Uh, use a little bit of the dog park fund, use some grant match, use some budget funds. So that way we're not tapping out every single line. You know, for, you know, milking, uh, milking reserve funds. Um, so with that, um, the state did come back and they're looking for a, a wetland offset, which I believe I left in, I supplied in a package to the select board and I will put that up on the board to look at.
Excuse me, the wetland offset, is that, does that have any impact on the cost of the permit? Or does that only allow us to do certain things in the area?
That is no cost on the permit.
No effect on the cost of the permit?
No, it does not cost.
But that, that, that's not what I said. Does it affect the cost of the permit?
Does it lower the cost?
For example, if you stop paying a certain part of the airport property, does it bring down the cost of the permit?
It does not.
It does not, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, uh, so Joe's given some options, um, for the board to consider. Now, if you guys wanna present, I know you've requested to be on the agenda, so go, go ahead and make your presentation, please.
No, I mean, I already said. Okay. Okay, um, I had emailed Joe after the coin drop to let him know how much we'd raised. Um, I'd stated that we have money now for the play structure in the small dog area, as well as the one I had submitted a purchase order for, um, whatever. And his response was, good news, please hold off on further purchases. We need to get the permit paid for before we start spending down the account. And I didn't answer him, I thought it would be better if we just went in and talked to him, because maybe I was misreading that. So anyway, but the, a problem with phrasing the account is, um, I found a couple of sponsors contacted me wanting to do the sponsor for the dog park. I can't take money in if we can't turn around and buy the sides. Same with bricks, we can't, we've got an order going in for 10 more bricks. If we can't turn around and buy the bricks, you know, we don't raise that money. So, anyway, I put in your packet, um, what we said back in June, um, I think July, and before the coin drop, about what we're raising money for. Um, one of the things was the GoFundMe, which Joe had written up, and there's nothing about a permit. There's play structures in there, but there's nothing about a permit in the GoFundMe. Um, what, before the coin drop, I said, this is for play structures. Back in June, I said, we've got the money for the fence and benches, but we need more things, fun things for the dog, that's what we're raising money for. So to turn around and freeze the funds and say that, that money, which we're talking $1688 we raised at the coin drop, plus whatever's in the account, um, that people donated in good faith for a particular reason. So that, that, that's that. And I had emailed Joe and, and he had said that I was the first to ask where the money was coming from. And we're talking back in September 1st. Never was it mentioned, it wasn't mentioned when they made the motion at the select board meeting to have Joe work on it, the obvious question would be, who's paying for it? And if they expected it to come out of the dog park fund, I would assume that they would have said, okay, you know, we'll assign Joe to do the permit, but we're going to, you know, expect you to raise the money. And if you have to submit the money with the permit, and he's just now telling us two months later that we're expected to raise the money, I don't see how that is possible. So that struck my, really bad chord, um, to be that fact.
I mean, if you, if you go back to the July 13th meeting, you know, in the motion, you said, you know, we've established the dog park north of the existing fence, you instructed Joe to get to work on the permit, um, with cooperation, you know, with input from the committee. And it seems to us that at that time, that would have been the point to say, oh, and by the way, ladies, I hope you understand, this is going to be expensive. Um, and you probably need to get fundraising, that was two months ago. We're here in September and suddenly the town manager is telling us, uh, the, the permit will not, the application will not go in until we have almost $9,000. That comes as a great shock. And especially considering, like, like, I understand that the town manager has a huge burden of responsibility in the town, right? We understand, it's a tough job, he has a lot to deal with. I know that all of you, in dealing with this dog park project, you've had a lot of different competing interests to try to balance, we understand that. But we feel that when you were first considering possible locations, the fact of the cost of putting it fully in the wetland, uh, in buffer, rather than the first location that was discussed, um, like, we feel that it was part of the town manager's due diligence to find out a ballpark figure of what that would cost before you went and voted on that location. And, you know, he had already dealt with the salt shed application, so, I mean, I've looked at the salt shed application, it's almost $4,000, and the dog park was quite a bit larger. He just said that offsetting it with, um, you know, not haying some part of the airport doesn't affect the cost at all. So it would have been pretty easy to figure out roughly how much it would cost. It's $375 for the base fee plus $75 per square foot. It, it's not a mystery. Um, now, during the last couple of months, I do think that you all should know that the amount that he said that the permit would cost has varied widely from $80,000 down to the current 86 something. I mean, I, I feel bad saying this, because I really do, um, feel, you know, that Joe, he works hard, he has a lot on his plate. However, um, when you instructed him to, um, put in the application with input from us, there was a point where, I'll just give you an example, in July, I wanted to be very clear about this. We were told to put into the sketch as much fill as we'd like to address some of the wetness in the low lying areas. We, uh, Linda went out with her son, developed a sketch that had quite a lot of fill, because a lot of that land is very wet in the worst part of the summer. And, uh, and Joe came back to her and said, that's gonna cost $80,000. And she said, well, please, could you leave that out? We knew that the board would balk at paying $80,000 for the permit, it was absolutely unworkable. We would never in a million years be able to raise that money. Joe said at that time that, um, he was tired of, uh, us changing our, changing our minds.
He, when Joe told me that it would be, that would cost way too much to do as much fill as we thought we'd need, I went back out with my son and we walked inch by inch and cut it down, because I was told it had to be under $8,000 square, whatever it was. And did a totally new math and gave it to Joe, and that's when he told you that.
Yeah, he said, yeah, then, because we had to change the sketch. And to be clear, we, we, we tried to work with whatever you asked us to do. Oh, there's a possibility of putting the dog park on the south end of the runway, could we come up with a sketch? So we made a sketch and we took a lot of time to go out there and block that area and measure it, okay? Um, so every time we were asked to produce a new sketch, we did. And then when he said, okay, well, with all this fill, it's gonna cost $80,000. Well, Linda met him in person, I talked to Joe on the phone, but we pleaded with him, please do not submit it with all that fill, because that's unworkable. And he said he is, he would not be dictated to by the whims of the dog park committee. That is what he said. And he said he was tired of us changing our minds every second week. We never changed our minds about anything, we tried very hard to do whatever it was that you asked us to do. We tried to work with the possible locations that were, we were told were available to us. So I'm just letting you know that that was very upsetting. And so since then, there have been some really confusing aspects, where, um, we feel that it's, in dealing with the wetlands, Joe is the manager. It should be his duty, part of it, to communicate between us and the wetlands. I know that Glenn, you asked us to please don't contact the wetlands, kinda leave it to Joe to talk to them, so that there'd be one somebody from Fairhaven dealing with the wetlands. However, when we all went up there, we were talking to Dory, the town hired consultant. She gave both of us, she gave us her card, and she said, if we have any questions, feel free to contact her anytime. Okay, so, um, I just want to be clear, um, that in the final sketch, for the final proposal to the state, the entire area is shown as impacting the wetland and buffer. I know that when we were out there with Dory, she said that the only part that would be counted for, towards impact on the wetland and the buffer would be the square footage where there was a change. Um, so for example, if there was a new gravelled area, or there was a new permanent structure, that would count as square footage, but that the, the fencing, like fencing and running your dogs, mowing areas that are already being continually mowed, does not count as impact on, those are permitted activities in a wetland, in a Class II wetland. We were told that by Dory, we have an email from Zapata Courage, who's the representative from the state, saying that. So, a couple of weeks ago, Joe told Linda and Linda that we cannot mow in any part of the area that's currently fenced. This did not make sense to us, because we know that the lower, at least one third, if not one half of that area that's fenced, has been regularly mowed. We know this, we saw it, Linda's husband is one of the RC flyers who's been mowing it.
And it came up at the select board when you decided on the property. Um, you, you had said that you thought it was a half, I remember Chris saying, well, more like a third.
Yeah.
And Joe had brought up that it was mowed, and suddenly he's telling us it wasn't mowed. And in the drawing you have at the, the last page of the review, it shows it as all impacted. And Joe had told me that they're calling it all a hayfield. Well, if they're calling it all a hayfield, we're paying for change of use. So that's not right, and that adds to the cost.
Yeah, that makes no sense, because if we were told that you do not need a permit to put up a fence, you do not need a permit to run dogs, you do not need a permit to mow something that's been previously mowed. I said this to Joe in an email and I asked for clarification, and he said, no, no, whatever you've heard, that is a hayfield according to Zapata. Well, if Zapata Courage thinks the state person is going to be, you know, weighing in deciding, I assume, on our permit, Joe needs to correct her incorrect view that that's a hayfield.
This has been mowed for a couple of years that I know, because our ZP flyers were mowing it.
Yeah, so telling us, nah, you can't mow it. And then because it's a change of use, he said that we can't allow anyone into the area until the permitting process is finished. Um, and again, we wanted to understand why, we wanted to make sure that we don't do anything to, like, we, well, actually, um, I wrote to Zapata Courage and I just asked her, it was one time, the very first time I ever wrote to anyone, I'd never wrote to Dory. The first time I wrote to Zapata Courage, only because I heard, you know, Joe was saying, it's a hayfield. No, you absolutely can't mow it, you can't let anyone in there. So I wrote her, um, just asking very simply, uh, we are trying to understand what we can and cannot do while we're waiting for the permitting process to be completed. Um, is it okay for residents to bring their dogs inside what we hope will be the future dog park area while we're waiting? We want to make sure we don't violate any rules, but by the same token, we don't want to be overly restrictive if there's no problem from the state's point of view. Any advice or insights would be greatly appreciated. Now, I got no reply from Ms. Courage, I don't know why, but I got a reply from Joe, telling me, uh, I hope the conversation with the state was clarifying. The state and our contractor, however, are becoming very frustrated with the harassment. Now, I want to be clear, I didn't harass anybody, and no one has a right to tell a Vermont resident that they can't contact the public servant who, their email address is on their website, the state website, saying, please contact us with questions. And frankly, we have questions, because the town manager is not communicating with us effectively. He's keeping us out of the loop about, like, just, we want very clear explanations as to why that area is being considered a hayfield when we know it is not a hayfield. Uh, we want to understand why we're being told we can't allow people into the fenced area when our understanding is that running dogs and fencing in a Class II wetland is allowed. The area is in the town zoning map as, um, you know, it's supposed, or in the town plan of 2016, it's supposed to be developed for recreational use. We understand it as a recreational area, so people take their dogs up there all the time. So why are we being told that, oh, no, no, you can't let them in there? We, we wanted an explanation, but in fact, Joe was very rude to Linda and Linda when they went to the office. I actually brought the audio of it, which I won't play, but.
So let's keep the conversation to the permit.
Right.
Let's keep personality.
No, no, I know, so which, so I'm saying, which I will not play, but it's upsetting.
All right, so we've heard from the dog park committee, we've heard from Joe.
So we actually have a summary of questions we would like you guys, and they're all related to the permit.
I'll give you plenty of time, but I want to hear from the board. You know, you've heard some of the costs, 8, 8645 for the, the permit for the, um, wetland permitting, that's kind of the first reaction. We really haven't talked about it as a board, knowing the full value of, uh, what the permit would cost. What was your feedback from board members? I mean, Joe gave three to four different options potentially that could work. Any feedback on that?
Well, first of all, I don't think a discussion on where the money's coming from should take place until we finalize the number. Sounds like there's some valid concerns that, you know, if it's, if the permit is all change of use, is all based upon all change of use. And, you know, it's arguably not all change of use. Then the permit specialists ought to be corrected, if that is the case. Joe, do you have any?
Is, I mean, it's not the case.
Oh, okay.
The, the, so some of that was mowed behind the, uh, behind the shack. So there's a buffer on wetland, and that buffer could be, I mean, it could be a concrete, it could be a road. So we experienced this with the concrete pad at the airport, where we, if we were to put the salt shed in, even on existing concrete, that's, that's a buffer. So you get charged 25 cents per, I think, square foot for impacting the buffer, even though it's concrete. So what we're talking about is, is buffer, uh, impacting the buffer near the wetland. It's not entirely change of use right there.
Which is this?
The orange area.
The orange area?
Yes.
That's the buffer area, so we're still being charged for that?
And that's the area in question, correct? Where they were mowing, is that?
Uh, where they were mowing, yes. But more of that, more was mowed than that, if you look at the, um,
You have like a bad one.
A clean picture of it, um, without all that shading on it. You can see very clearly what was mowed and what wasn't. The grass types are totally different.
So it's, uh, we're, we're affecting the buffer even, uh, without a change of use? I mean, if, if the recre, that light recreational activity is allowed without one. Getting, you know, uh, I mean, how does it affect the buffer? What is affecting the buffer, just the, the grass cutting or?
Just having the dog, just using that space now, just using that space for the dog park impacts the buffer. No, we're not mowing it, but it's still being, uh, corked off and used as a dog park.
But it's allowed, it's allowed purpose.
I understand what's on wetlands, you please.
I can only explain what, what I am told.
But if you see how it's.
Like, this is, I, I do, but again, the concrete pad next door.
Oh, we're not talking about a concrete pad, we're talking about dog feet and people's feet.
No, we're talking about a salt shed, a concrete pad, it's, you know what I mean, it's.
No, no, because that's impervious.
But it's still considered, um, a buffer.
I have a quote from Zapata Courage. It's in the buffer.
It's in the buffer.
She said right here, if all you are willing to.
Can you please hold, please hold on, just give it a minute, please. We're trying to have a discussion, give everybody an opportunity. Rod, continue.
So I, I guess, if, if these activities are allowed, regardless of the setting of posts and having a fence, which is allowed, okay? I just don't understand what is impacting the buffer. I can understand the pavers impacting the buffer. And I can understand, you know, certain activities at the, the entrance. That's completely understandable. But I don't understand how an allowed activity is impacting, because that activity was taking place before. It has been taking place for years, okay? So if it's, if it's been taking place for years and they've said that, you know, like, for instance, they're talking about cutting the grass, okay? If it was cut before, it could be cut now, there's no impact. Well, if the dogs were running before and the people were running before, how was that an impact to this site? Uh, these are rhetorical questions for you to answer, but, you know, certainly an argument to be given towards the state. Okay, if, I, I don't understand how, I, I think it's an egregious fee, personally. And I have come across state employees that, that made a mistake. They misunderstood something or it was misrepresented to them. You know, I'm not saying it's a malicious act, but this is an egregious fee. Now, with that said, I don't believe that the taxpayers, it's, it's not in the budget and I don't believe it falls under the category of emergency reserves or, or anything like that. But I think we've got to argue the case that 8,600 and change is not appropriate when there's no change of use impacting this site, except for the stuff that certainly is at the entrance. And I can understand that completely, I understand that there, there is going to be a, a wetland permit fee, but $8,600 is.
Yeah, but, so I think I was terribly naive on this permit when, um, Joe said we need to get a permit. I thought, okay, we're gonna get a, it would never cross my mind to say, well, what would that cost? And where will it come from? So like I say, I think I was naive about it, so this is, I don't know how to fix it right now. Having those four different options, or maybe a combination of two, is something that I think we, we're gonna need, I hate to say it, a little time to figure out what's, what's the best route to go. I feel like, you know, initially when this started, gosh, we were all so happy and excited. And the way I remember it, and I don't know if this is totally accurate, was that you were gonna raise the funds to do the dog park and everything would be good, and you were gonna have volunteers, and we've kind of hit one issue after another. I feel badly about that, and I feel badly about being naive about not asking what a permit like that would cost. But as far as what I can say right now, I don't know. I need to have more discussion about these, where, where exactly they would come from, what's the right thing. Because the people that come here are all really, really wanting the dog park, but I, I also wonder about other residents that would be upset to think that we're gonna use their tax dollars to pay for something maybe that they weren't expecting. So that's kind of what's in my mind right now.
Glenn, do you have your thoughts?
The thought that comes to mind first is that, when I look at those four options, is we originally were at the south end of the runway with, thinking that we could get away without a permit. We got, and I'm not pointing fingers in the direction, I'm just saying, we got to where we thought it was a better option to be north of the fence, culture, and the building. And we, as a board, said, yeah, let's, let's do that. I'm trying to, my recollection is, part of the discussion when we made the decision for the current location was some discussion around, hey, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. I don't, I think there's a lot of good people trying to do the right stuff, and sometimes stuff happens. And unfortunately, some of it's been pretty unpleasant for some people. But we did, my recollection is that we did say, hey, let's do it right, and if that means getting permitting, let's get permitting. I'm with you, Carol, I, did I think far enough to say, who's gonna pay for that permitting? No, but I do look at it as saying, uh, I don't feel comfortable sitting here right now tonight saying it's not my problem either. I, I think there is a solution, I, I don't know what that is. Maybe the solution is that we definitely don't, I want to. Maybe the solution is that we definitely, I don't, I wanna see us take months deciding whether or not we're gonna pay for the permit and not have it go in. I'd rather, let's get the permit and get it in. Paying for it is, is there some other alternative here that I didn't see in our, of the four options? And one is, we, we, we pay for that permit, we, we front the money, and we, over time, try to recoup that so we're not hitting taxpayers that we didn't put the money in there for? Now, I don't know, I saw the one, whether you, whether you pick and loan that kind of money or use that from the grant match, because I saw that as an option. I'm going, we've got a lot of grants out there, do I have enough grant match money to use it and still do the things we've already earmarked? And I'd want to look, look at those. But I think it's a, the solution isn't one of saying, it's, it's the town's problem, it's your problem. No, we have a problem, and I think we, we can solve this problem.
Can I just bring up something? It has to do with going to the wetlands about the area in question, this not change of use. When we came, when you guys presented it and you said, okay, we're gonna do the permit, put everything you want in the permit, even if it's not something you want now. So we put in things that, I mean, we have no desire to put up wood plate, wood plate structures and all that. And then, um, when Joe came to me and said, oh, we forgot the metal arch sign that Ferguson's made, so we need to add that to the permit, will you have your son do a new one to show it? And I went back to him and I said, now, you know, the permit's gonna cost a lot, let's just cut, let's cut it down to just what we need now. We need gravel in the entry, we need gravel under the benches, blah, blah, blah. And he said, no, he wanted to leave it in this bargaining chip. So right there, we've got a lot of expense in stuff that we're not gonna do. So, and I removed, I gotta say, I did remove a couple of them, just because it made sense. But there needed to be more removed, and I don't think we need it for a bargaining chip. If we make it reasonable, they'll grant the permit. If we make it so outlandish that we want everything, then you get into all this bargaining.
And, and just, I, I want to remind y'all, like, we presented before that Zapata Courage in the email that she sent on July thirteenth, the day that you guys decided on the location, part of what she said was, if all you're planning to do is erect a fence and mow the area inside similar to the mowing regime that currently takes place, then that can be done without a wetland permit, regardless of whether it overlaps wetland or wetland buffer. I do not believe that has changed. I do not believe what you're permitted to do in a Class II wetland has changed. We have not done anything yet that is not permitted in a Class II wetland. So, you know, I mean, we have time to decide how the permit is gonna be paid for, I guess, you know?
And we would, we would have, I mean, if, if Joe had said, listen, this is how much it is, we've got to figure out a way. We would have said, okay, we promised plate structures, we'll do that, and then let's, we'll, we'll do some fundraising. But we weren't given that option. We were so flat out, we're paying for it, fundraise some more. And that's what really got our goal is, it's, that's not right to do it.
No, and he flat out told us, the board is not going to pay. He said, they're not gonna do maintenance, they're not gonna do the permit.
They're not gonna do it.
They're not gonna...
Verbatim.
Jess, um, you can...
All right, yeah, I figured you'd forgive me. I'm, I'm somewhere in the middle, I think, I think we'll have to, the town side will probably have to eat some of this based on the situation. I'm pretty frustrated with the way the rules are applied. I feel like there's a very uneven application of the standards here. I don't see, and, and I, I felt like we were told that we could do certain things. That's why I asked, are you sure we can start before we have the permit?
Right, right.
I said that.
Yeah.
And everybody said, oh, no, you're all good, you're good. So I, I'm pretty, I was confused when, when they said we had to stop. But we do have that in writing, correct?
We do have that in writing.
And I, I do wonder how much of that is because this has played out so publicly, that those, uh, certain state individuals don't really want to, uh, you know, maybe they were trying to slide some things through, and now they're going by the book exactly. If that makes sense. I, I think we can figure out a way to, if, if you guys can help us some.
So is there...
I just don't think it should be eighty-six hundred dollars, so.
No.
So I think question one is...
I think we all agree with that.
Okay.
Question one, I think you...
You want to start there?
Right?
Yeah, I want to start there.
Eighty-six hundred dollars, Joe, I mean, is, I think we need some more information on that. I know you've been working with Zapata, but is it definitive that it's the whole area or just the impacted areas? I understand that you're impacting the whole area because you're fencing the whole area, and that may be why, that may be why the answer is what it is, because you're fencing in that whole area.
But they did say that if you're only putting the fence up and you're only mowing the grass, some, you know, the way it's done, done today, there's no need for a permit. So there's no permit fee, so there's no impact on buffer or anything.
So I think we went down the rabbit hole of the permit, because what we were afraid of is future use.
Right, right.
You know, somebody isn't gonna know that we all promised not to mow it five times.
Correct.
And then it's gonna mow it six times, and we don't want to be sheltered. We, we don't want our dog park pulled out once we get it. So that's why we went the permit route, and...
But we still can't, even the permit, we still can't mow.
Well, yes, we can, but...
We can, though.
Well, the man can.
But half of it was mowed.
I think that's the whole thing, is once you have the permit, you can do all this stuff. That's why it impacts the buffer differently than it did yesterday.
But before, half of it almost was being regularly mowed.
And we should still...
We know that, and that should be emphasized to her.
I agree with that.
You know, like, to say, oh, no, it's a hayfield, she thinks it's a hayfield. Why does she think it's a hayfield? We know it's not, we all know it's not.
A portion of it was.
Right, right.
So let's get clarif, try to get some clarification on the scope of the impact for the, you know, the impact fee, the permit fee for up there. See if it's the full fifteen thousand or whatever the square footage is, if it's less, um...
There's the potential she's gonna tell you, it shouldn't have been mowed in the first place like that.
Right, right. But it's been that way for years.
No, but that's why she's treating it that way, and then it's just, I'm, I'm playing.
There, there's still, and that's good for working the permit. The one that's concerning me the most is that, that Zapata or someone comes down, and we have two or three people with dogs running around in there, and they fine us a very large amount of money for utilizing the dog park before we have a permit. And I'm gonna tell you, we, there, there's no question in my mind, the taxpayers will get hit, will get hit for a lot more than eight thousand dollars.
I was told by Joe, it was that they strongly recommended that people not be allowed in the dog park, the same as they strongly recommended the location next to the pavilion. It's not saying you can't do it. And the fact that we're picking and choosing which strong recommendation we're gonna follow, it, because you, people have been waiting for it. And so i- if they normally ran their dogs to the field and threw ball, closing the gate is just stopping them from what they would normally do.
My understanding is the conversation might have started with strongly recommending, but there's an email that came in that says, cease and desist.
Well, is that because we haven't seen it? We haven't seen it, we haven't seen that.
The things, the things are happening so quickly, you may not even, I don't mean to...
The last thing we heard from Joe was she strongly recommended.
I did get an email today just trying to figure out what the, uh, what the fines would be in case we were fined, and yes, it was, don't do that. But this is, people speak in a way. We strongly recommend you don't do that. I would take, if somebody told me from the state, I strongly recommend you don't do that on your land, I would say, I sure won't.
Okay, but when she, but when she emailed us...
Hold on, please, Joe was talking.
I have received emails, and I'm, I'm sorry that you feel put upon, but I've received emails from the state and our contractors saying, please don't do this, please don't do this, please stop, we'll get this done. But they need to do their jobs, and they've been asked a lot of questions, and they're trying to respond and follow their rules. And that's what they're at, and that's where they're at now, they're following the rules, and they're just... I'm sorry, this, this is frustrating for you. It's frustrating for me, because I've heard the same things you've heard. I've heard you can run your dog in the fence, I've heard that. But they changed their mind, and I don't know why, other than this is a change of use, now you have to stop. I under, I understand what you're saying.
You don't relay information, you absolutely do not. And, you know, last I heard, strongly recommended, asked you for two months, how are you gonna pay for this, this permit? And in those two months, you could have said, well, you know, maybe I ought to think about, we could fundraise and, and have money go towards that. But nothing. And then all of a sudden, we're looking at the permits being turned in, and we find out, oh, we're supposed to pay the eighty-six hundred, well, we didn't know, and it has to, the money has to go in with the permit, and we're like freaking out.
We had two months, we could have, we, we could have had a big fall event, like we had one in spring, in May, if we had known, if we'd had time, you know?
So I didn't know, I didn't know what that was gonna cost. There was, I know there are numbers out there. This is, tends to be kind of a subjective thing. Like, I didn't know that the Army Corps of Engineer wasn't going to charge us. That was just like gold right on top. I thought the Army Corps was coming in and gonna double that permit. Instead, what they said was, nope, we don't want any money, thank you. So all of, there's a lot of things that were flux, that were changing, and I'm sorry I didn't have a number for you.
You did.
I didn't have the number.
Okay, you did, you told me.
Okay, guys, we're not, please...
Right, right, so can I say?
No, stop, please. We're not fighting over the number, we're trying to figure a solution of how to pay for the number. That's what we're working on. The board has made some observations, um, questions on the scope of the project. Is it fifteen thousand square feet? Joe was gonna find out what that is. You know, I heard from board members that they want to look at funding half of it or all of it. That discussion, once we have a final number, we can have a, the board is not saying we're not gonna fund any of it.
We appreciate that.
That discussion is ongoing, we can't make that decision until we have a final number.
Okay, we appreciate that.
We're too far down the road not to finish the project.
Correct.
Okay, but please...
I think we're all in that.
Yeah, but please understand that the town manager said they're not gonna do it. You have to raise the money, so that's why we're so upset. And so all I wanted to say to Joe, which I think is what Linda was also trying to say, is please, when you're communicating with the wetland or with the board, whoever it is, do not keep us out of the loop. Don't just make blanket statements like that, say, nope, you can't let people in the dog park. If you explain it to us that they changed, rather than saying, you know, saying things in such a hostile way, we would be a lot more able to be cooperative, you know what I mean?
Chop, then go ahead.
So my question is, is a dog park able to be used right now the way it stands with no additional, anything being put on it, without the permit?
The latest email adds at like three thirty this afternoon.
Yes, but that's with the, uh, the permitting process. Now, if we just said, we're gonna stop on the permitting process and not continue that, we're just gonna leave it the way it is. I'm just trying to think, like, if we could, like, save whatever we got left in the year.
I believe you've sailed, you're, you're in the permit process right now.
And try to put it off till next year, give it a little more time for fundraising and worry about it.
I think you're there already, you know? My opinion is that you're there already with the, with the permit. So we, we, I think we need that more information or an explanation from Zapata of why it's inclusive of the whole area.
Sure.
And then, once we have that final number, um, figure out a way for...
That discussion can take place.
Correct.
Can we just delete the extra structure and gravel that we don't want now, so that we're not paying for it now?
Are you talking about, like, these things?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because there, there's a lot of woods.
Are you gonna want them in the future?
I don't foresee it, no.
If you don't, if you don't foresee it, then yes, I would take them out. But if you think it's gonna be in there?
I don't foresee it.
I don't want to short the project in the end. I want it to be an asset to the town that we can all enjoy. And if we gotta pay a little...
I mean, I really do.
If we want, have to pay a little now, I'd rather do it now and go through the process again. That's just...
However you want to.
I don't think that's one, right, one time.
Which was the idea in the beginning, that's why we went down this route.
So I think we need more information and explanation. I think Joe can work with Zapata and at least get that in writing for, you know, Rob and other board members to see what...
My only comment on doing, you know, everything is, um, the downside is there's gonna be different players involved when, if, if the work does happen, and there will be way too much opportunity for the state to come down and say, that's not what we agreed upon, you're fined. Okay? There is some sort of wisdom to do what, do what we can't do right now. That the, the up, the, the, um, the base fee for the permit, as I understand it, is like three hundred and fifty bucks or something like that. Yes, it's time consuming, but it, it's not a big cost, and it doesn't change, a lot of things don't change. But at least all the players are involved, and the work is done, and then there, you know, you can't do anything. There's no interpretive problems in the future. And since all the players could possibly change.
It appears a little that would be minor, if it's all inclusive, that's get you to the eight thousand, that these little additions here and there shouldn't be, square footage shouldn't be that big on.
I don't know, but, you know, if, if the discussion is that all, all those things have an impact, and since the impact is, you know, so many square, square feet away, or, I, I don't know what the discussion is gonna be. But just understand, if, forget that, you know, uh, that kind of detail. If, if we, if it's in the permit today and all the players on our side change, and work is done tomorrow, okay? And we do it wrong, the only players that are still gonna be staying are probably the state players. They're, they're career people.
I believe that for the committee, I mean, however they wanna...
It's just the downsides.
To do it, if you want to take it out, I...
I will follow your advice, it's just that if it's, I thought it was like nine hundred and something dollars for a ten by ten foot area.
Right, and it's seventy-five cents per square foot, a hundred square feet.
Plus the fees for your...
Right, so you're talking a lot for, and I think some of the wood structures were maybe three feet by twelve feet or four by twelve or whatever. You're talking a lot of money that is being spent, and I don't care if the town wants to do that and that, but it just seems like that's part of what jacked it up.
And we would really like to have an explanation of, like, okay, when they come up with that number, what, break it down so that we can say, oh, well, maybe we don't need this extra structure and this extra structure, and we could see how much it would bring it down, you know?
But just adding the number tells you nothing.
Right.
I guess possible, Joe, or not, like...
Well, it's reasonable, it's a reasonable, why, why would you pay a bill if, you know?
We don't know what to pay, we just asked for that.
And the simple answer might be, anything within the fence is contributed.
I don't know what to...
Yeah, if that's the answer, then it, then it doesn't matter.
My, my only concern is, I think everyone needs to take a deep breath, that includes the state, and that, uh, and, uh, and I'm not saying, everyone's got a right, you can talk to anybody you want to talk to, but sometimes, I'm saying once again, you're better off saying less. We get people, including our taxpayers, upset, thinking they're paying for something, that they may or may not, there, there's no decisions.
But that's what we're told, so that's, that's why we... Right, um, so that's...
Social media stuff is just getting so ugly.
But that still brings, begs the question of money that was raised up until the point where Joe said it's, no, you're paying for the permit, does it go for what it was intended for? Is it set aside for what it's intended for? Or is that amount plus, and I've still got the check made out to the town for the coin drop, or is that going to go towards the permit? And I think the people that donate the money for a particular reason want to know, and that's only fair.
That's fair to all children.
And I don't think it's fair to people who donated expecting it to go to those things to say, oh, well, we have this money now, well, you know, that, oh, that, that the board didn't think about how to pay for the permit, so let's use this money that people donated for other stuff. That doesn't seem fair to me.
Alright, so I'm gonna wrap it up. Joe is gonna get some more information on what actually is inclusive of the eighty-six fifty, eighty-six forty-five, what's in there, and then hopefully you can get that by the next board meeting, and we can make a decision as a board of how we're going to pay for that.
I'll, I'll have him break it down, um... which we already have a little bit of it, that's not so aggregate, but I'll have him break it down, buffer, uh, wetland impact, which I think we already have. Yep, and then, uh, we'll tally up toy, uh, toy structures. So, that way, we have, that'll be three categories.
And the big question is, why is it ninety-seven hundred feet of wetland impact, if we're not gonna put anything in that?
Right.
Isn't that the question everybody wants to answer?
Yeah.
I don't understand the question.
It's, it's, why is it, just because we built a fence?
Why is it now everything?
Why is it now ninety-seven hundred feet?
Yep.
If we're not gonna put any gra, like, we were, if we're not gonna do gravel, if we're not gonna do, why isn't it just where the place stations are? Place structures, whatever.
Yeah, because if we, if we only cut the grass.
I think that's, that's what I'm hearing, people wanna know.
Correct, and I don't, I think we need that, and we'll make.
Inquiry.
I don't know if we can, uh, one of the frustrating things for everybody is, I think, the amount of time that we've spent on all this, and, the meetings get consumed by it, there's people waiting for other things. So, if you get information back before two weeks, and it's reasonable, maybe we could have a special meeting sooner, like in a week or so, so we can try to get this wrapped up.
Do we have a special dog park meeting next week?
If you have information.
It's feasible, and, and it seems productive. I like all you guys, but I don't wanna meet with you.
I thought I'd get killed for that suggestion, but I'd like to just move it along and get it out of this main meeting, when we're not doing some of the things that we should be doing.
I'll, I'll pull everything together, um, hopefully tomorrow. And I'll, I'll send out some information, maybe we can schedule something.
Sounds good, if not next week, we'll be back in two weeks, on Tuesday, and we'll get a decision before you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Murphy?
Murphy sleeping still?
He's sleeping. He just had nine, he had nine days. But he wanted to come, so I had to bring him.
Yeah, but he'll come and get ice cream now.
No trouble, ever.
All right, the, uh, Airport Road Mobile Home Park.
So, I think we have some.
Get this gentleman here. Did anybody else come with it, or just?
Just me.
Just you, okay, all right. Joe, did you wanna give an update, kinda, where we're at, what, what kind of the development has been in the last two weeks?
Sure, but, uh, before I go into that, I wanna, I wanna clarify, I said, I, I wanna correct something, I said it last week. I said that the park had received thirty thousand dollars in grant funds, and that's not accurate. They received ten thousand dollars in grant funds, um, to pay off their water bill. Yep, to help pay off their water bill last time. Um, uh, to be honest, where we are now, there's, from what I understand, there's not been much movement from the trailer park themselves. I did talk to Chuck, he can grab some information, um, for me. Um, we worked with the, I, I don't know if she's the owner, the owner, I'll call her, of the, um, trailer park, and she did apply for the de-cap program, which is a program that pays for mostly water bills. Um, and seemingly, um, and I don't wanna commit to this, but it seems that they will, de-cap will pay the entire water bill. So, we're waiting till the end of this month to get the confirmation from them, but it sounds like they will. All right. And that's pretty much the extent of movement on that. As far as I know, the leak is, as of like the third week, the leak was still going.
Yeah, we gotta do that, and I gotta come to you when I get it shut off, right? Okay, I'll see you then.
Uh, no, let us know, you can ask Eileen, and she can just get it straight.
I got somebody who'll do it, but you guys can only tell you when I came in and missed you.
So, I mean, how, is the board comfortable with holding another couple of weeks until we get confirmation of the, the payment of the back water fees? You know, we, we asked Joe to work with the state on that. I mean, it's, it's not a payment plan per se that we're working on currently, but it's, you know, they're making a good paid effort to get, um, payment through those other means.
And we're working to fix the, the leak type.
What is your, uh, you know, pulling out of the air schedule for?
I'll try and do it this week if I can. I just gotta come down inside.
So, any time.
Yeah. I already talked to a guy, we can do it before it expires. Somebody said, oh, you gotta mention it in the meeting before you do it. One of the people.
I think the idea was, uh, not putting, uh, good money after bad, so that's, I think we wanted you to know that you could come up with a plan before you put more money in.
Right.
And I talked to you about that.
If, potentially, the problem goes, the, the past due problem goes away. You know, they're fixing the, the going forward problem, then it might be a tenable.
Right then.
Resolution.
Well, we got the other problem with the taxes, too.
So, there's potential for a tax sale on the properties, I know Joe has been working on that.
But I think it was one of the deals where Landler got ahold of me, and she said she's gonna try to work on people ain't paid.
Well, that's a separate issue.
And that's a separate process, I just, I wanna make sure everybody is, has all the knowledge you need, like, the water bill's probably gonna be, it sounds promising that the state will help with that.
Right.
Um, if you guys can work on getting the, the walk fixed, so it's not, you know, a seven thousand dollars a quarter for the, the water bill.
Right.
I think you guys are gonna be in better shape than the other, the lingering issue, though, is the tax sale, and I, I don't know how that will, I, I don't know how that will work out.
But that's November, the timeframe.
Yep.
And actually, it's a November plus.
I, I have to, I have to deal with the dog park this week, so.
So, you gotta re-brief.
And it's a lengthy process anyway.
Yeah, it's a lengthy process, that's what I'm saying, it's a November plus. So, the real.
Thing is the walk.
Yeah.
Well, just be careful not to forget that, that is an albatross hanging out there, there's a large tax debt. Again, if you put in a bunch of money to fix the water leak, you still may end up at a tax. I'm just trying to have everyone's eyes wide.
Well, there are another question about that, there are people that own trailers in that park, and when we were looking at the tax maps of that, um, it looks like the park's getting charged for all the trailers in the park. How would that be possible, if there are people in there that own them?
I believe the unit itself is taxed separately from the land that sits on.
I don't see where the hundred eighty thousand dollars is for building material on that land, if there are people that are paying their taxes, that own their own trailer.
Staff are listeners.
Don't quote, don't quote me on that one, but there is, I believe there's a land taxation, and there's free to the units.
Then, I wanna say, six of those units belong to the trailer park. Um, I think we have two abandoned units in there that should go to tax sale, and then, everybody else is taxed individually.
So, the others taxed individually are separate tax sale or current from the land. So, what the tax sale you're working on is the land.
I was telling property that sits underneath all the trailers.
Yeah, but how much of the tax sale for the land is the value for? They say three hundred and some thousand dollars, I don't see where three hundred and some thousand dollars there. With the thing, I think it's gotta be, a lister's gotta reappraise this again, too.
Cause it's only, only five acres, right?
There are only five acres, and there are, um, six trailers there that the park got owned, and all them six trailers, I don't see where they're worth anything hardly. They're maybe worth five thousand a piece, we'll say.
But the site, uh, supposedly the site got used or something.
Then you got people in there, you got trailers that are worth over thirty thousand dollars, and when you figure it all up, it's figuring up, they're figuring them trailers in the value of everything. When we figured it all out, cause I did get some papers on some other trailers there, and I add them all up, and then, that's where it comes up with three hundred thousand now. So, and somehow, the land is getting charged for taxes on the trailers that are there, too. I think.
The thing is, this select board has nothing to do with it.
It's all a lister's.
We, we.
I know.
You're, you're talking Greek to us.
So, what do I gotta do, go talk to the listers?
Yeah.
Because that's another thing that should be.
I'm not sure that they will take a lot of comment from you, because you're not the landowner.
Yeah, but that's the thing, we're, we're trying to figure out, why is it so high?
It's, it's a public.
They would definitely have all the sheets, the property record sheets, they would have all that listing on it, for sure. I don't know Lender in the office, but they, they would have all that.
There's usually a lister, definitely Monday through Wednesday, there's always one floating around. Thursday, for sure.
And, and we're gonna hold off the, the sewer abatement, possible discussion, till we see what happens from this, from the burn. Yeah, and that, I'm just, wanna make sure.
So, I think we're in a holding, a holding pattern for now, we're waiting on the grant application to see what that comes through. Um, it sounds promising that, that'll work out, and then, you're gonna start potentially working on some fixes.
Yeah, cause I got licensed homeowners who'll do it.
Yeah, just reach out to Joe, and, uh.
So, this is only the backwater, though, right, right now, as we sit here, that pipe is just flowing water.
There, I know.
Okay, well, it's.
It's something that we gotta work on, we gotta get it done, but.
What Joe's saying is, there's very likely to be a seven thousand dollar quarter in your future.
There, there's another bill coming, because right now, the water's flowing.
Yeah.
As we sit here, there's another seven thousand dollar bill brewing in the park. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to pay off the past one.
Well, how is that seven thousand dollars, ain't been a month since the last meeting I'm here?
There's.
Two weeks, and that one was talked about, that quarter wasn't done, now all of a sudden, you're telling me there ain't no quarter already?
When the bill comes out.
They march all the time.
He's just telling you that you, we're losing ground every day.
Yeah. So, I think more to come, we're gonna wait until we hear on the grant application.
All right, so, what's that, next week, next meeting the guy come through?
I don't believe so.
No, I.
Are you working?
Yeah, I'm, we'll work with this, we'll continue to work with the state to find grant funds for people who haven't paid their water bills.
And if you want to do the water, talk to Joe, if you wanna hear your fix.
Yeah, Joe would need to send the crew up to turn the curb stuff on. All right, everybody fine with that?
So, what do I do when I have to shut it off, give everybody notice in the park? Or do you guys gotta do a printout notice, or not, or what do we gotta do?
The, the park is, yeah, that's your, you should get the, you should get the property owner to, to do something, this is not the town and the water system.
She should at least, or you should work.
Well, she works all the time, and that's the problem. She don't, she ain't available during the day, I have to get ahold of her late at night, or if I wanna call her at four o'clock in the morning.
Maybe the way, maybe the way to go would be to have her email Joe the time, no?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that won't quite work, cause we don't know, I gotta get ahold of this person, see when, he said when I am ready, he'd just come do it. But I gotta call him, I'll at least shut it off for a day, I'm gonna have to.
Right, so I'm saying, set it up a week in advance, say, next Thursday, Joe, when you shut the water off and turn it back on at three.
That way, I could give them notice, like, a week ahead.
You or she should give notice to the.
A week ahead.
But it would be nice if the landowner, if you got that from the landowner, correct?
Those are me and you saying.
Yeah, that would be preferable, yes, so that way it avoids any legal problem, but the landowner should be talking to her tenants. The town is not gonna talk to her tenants.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a private system.
Yeah, it's a private.
I think she's getting tired of it, cause everybody ain't paying it.
But it's only fair that people be, uh, give, be given notice to stock up on some water that got the need.
Well, give them two or three day notice before.
Yeah.
Well, and tell them too, that it may, well, for things happen, it may take another little while.
Right, it might take a day or so.
Then you think it's gonna.
It might be, shut it off today, you might not get it fixed till tomorrow.
Right.
So, there are possibility, you gotta tell everybody that.
And the, yeah.
And you, you might wanna talk to John a little bit as well, cause there are some people in there that have health concerns.
Yeah, so, I might talk to him, but I can actually, I probably get, some, they could probably get help from down here, get water or something, help them people out, too. And that means, I'm a concern for people, older people, probably.
You also might think about putting a couple of different stops in, so that, within the confines of the parks, so that you can shut off quadrants or something, so like, maybe you don't have to shut off twenty trailers, you can shut off like five and five.
Yeah.
In future breaks, just while you're digging.
I mean, right now, I'm just gonna try to get what we got leak and fix, where we don't have to worry about it, and, yeah. Cause you don't know, like you're saying, the taxing, we gotta figure out taxing.
Yeah.
Why would you wanna spend a lot of money, we're gonna have, should we fix all this stuff and?
Yep, I agree.
Joe, this is a question I would have, like, af- after he does the work, would you be able to send Mike up with the trucks to just see, did it make an impact on the reading, like, did it address the usage?
Sure.
So that they know, like, yeah, the current usage.
Right.
Yeah, they can, they can take, they can take the minute by minute right off the meter, so, yeah, that would be, yeah, more than happy to do that.
I'm sure.
It might be helpful to them, so that, oh, that.
Sure.
And you got a big, big leak, or there is.
So, what you're saying, that's only check it before, and then check it after?
The meter's keeping track anyways, I believe.
Well, can, do they, do they have some minute by minutes, so they know what this, the, at the current flow is?
Um, they can, they can get the minute by minute, but they actually have to go and, and read it with the computer.
So, how much time do they need to get that minute by minute?
Hold it like a month, something.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's an extended period of time, so when Mike runs up, says, turn the curb stuff off, he can make a speed on the reading. And then, when he comes back, turns it on, can read it again, and then we can see.
Oh, sure. At the next moment, again.
Yes. So, you see, it might be helpful to know if there was.
A lot of lava.
If, or.
You know, maybe help out.
Well, when you fix it, you broke it in another spot.
I already, I already waiting for that one.
All right, we appreciate it, so we're all set, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's my common experience.
Break it in on us.
I break it in on us.
All right, public comment, uh, nobody for public comment.
Uh, how about online?
There's nobody on that.
Okay. There were.
There were.
Uh, department head reports? But there.
Yes. Uh, department head reports, we started with the police, um, chief will be, chief will be on vacation between the twenty-fourth and the eleventh, just as a heads up. Sergeant Kerber, uh, will be handling day-to-day operations. That we'll be talking about later, but the chief wanted to let us know that the highway safety grant ends September thirtieth, which, which is the fiscal, uh, calendar. And then, that's done, we got, well, uh, the haunted hayrock, excuse me, haunted hayride over in Benson's going again. He's, he proposes to staff it, just like we always do, the only, the only year we missed was last year, which would be the year of COVID.
The haunted one?
The hayride.
The hayride.
Uh, we finished road construction, uh, detail up on Route Four. Uh, we billed that company three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. So, I don't know what the profit is off of that, but that was what we built it with. We did, we needed a new part timer, our part timers, um, a few of them have just kinda dropped off and haven't worked, so we hired a new part timer, Chris DeVito. Uh, he's a level three, full-time certified officer, uh, but he is only part timers, to emphasize that. Uh, he covers shifts.
A level three, say it again.
Well, he's a level three officer. Um, then something that came down from the state, uh, which the town had, it was, we had to approve it, not to, we had an option. We had to approve the statewide use of force policy, the state pushed through a, a use of force, uh, policy that is now, that pertains to all law enforcement agencies. Ours, the state, it's, it's, it's what it is. And the thing, the pre-machine is a process of install, or wait for the manufacturer to get there, to do that. And that's all that you have.
Uh, do you think of any?
No. Uh, so, they got the dry wells in on Furness Street. Uh, I did have a, a couple of questions about the, uh, felt that's over top of the grading. For anybody that's watching, the felt has to stay there until there's, the little seed takes root around the, around where the dig was, so that way the, the mud doesn't wash down until, uh, into the new drain. They got a couple replaced over near Marhar that failed, uh, had a hole through the top of it. Uh, the fall grading has begun, though they've been out there grading pretty much all summer, trying to keep up at those, uh, roads. Uh, fall maintenance on the vehicles is wrapping up, they, I just signed the document to, yesterday. Uh, fall maintenance on the vehicles is wrapping up, they, I just signed the document to, yesterday, uh, the town brush is gonna be oiled. So that's a yearly thing we do, is we do the oil undercoat. And then we talked about the, uh, MRGP grants, go to the.
We're good, come on, we haven't got to, we haven't part yet, so.
Okay, well, there's a lot of pressure outside on this.
Yeah, I'll, I know you're out there, so we'll grab it if you don't wanna.
Uh, grants and aid worked, uh, for three storm drain outlets, um, two on Capitol Hill and one on West Street. Let's see, for water, they had a, they completed the, um, hydro flushing, uh, that went off really well, no trouble, no complaints. Um, we're working with excavators to get a price, um, and I need to emphasize, this is not a panic situation. Um, but we do have a leak coming off the water main that goes over Adam Street. It's not, it's not in the middle of the bridge, it's right at the end of the bridge where it goes, where the pipe dunks down into the concrete.
You meant to say the Adam Street Bridge?
What did I say?
You should said Adam Street.
Oh, Adam Street Bridge, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the pipe runs across the bridge and then it kinda dips down into a, a block of concrete, and it's leaking inside that concrete where the concrete had shifted. So it's just a small leak, we're giving quotes to see what it's gonna cost to, to get that fixed.
Are you trying to do that before winter?
Yes.
Water, you said?
I'm sorry.
Water?
Water. The sewer line's further underneath, um, sewer line isn't inspected regularly, the sewer line is in good shape. Uh, wastewater plant's still going, uh, upgrade is still going, they, they, uh, they did get the final pour in for the aeration, aeration, aeration tanks. They did find a couple, a couple leaks, but they, I think they're sealed up, I'm waiting to get a report back at the next meeting for that. Apparently this is normal, when you pour this much con- when you pour this much concrete, drop that much water in, the, the hairline cracks will kinda, um, leak until the cement makes its way into the cracks. So, next meeting we'll follow up with them. Uh, pounder wits in, and sewer flushing is coming in the next few weeks. And that is what we got for sewer, yeah, for highway water and sewer.
Okay, town manager report?
Uh, we'll start with, uh, passive, uh, VLCT, uh, annual meeting. We could use, uh, a designated to go and vote at the annual meeting, um, I'm gonna be out of town. So if somebody is interested in, in attending, either online or in person? Anybody?
I'm better, I'm good, no one else, no one else wants to, wants to do it, and you're talking, uh, do I need to sign up? Could you get me to sign up for the online, the Zoom?
I can.
Instead of going to Burlington, I'd rather sit in my, sit in my.
Chair.
Chair.
Yeah, so we have a.
But I, I would do it if no one else was.
Come on?
I'll, I'll sign you up.
Is there anything major on the agenda that Glenn's gonna be told on?
Only, only marijuana, but no. No, I, I, I would, uh, I would intend to bring back, I don't, I, I would intend to bring back some kind of report. I'm sure they're gonna be talking ARPA funding, uh, and I, I bet they will be talking opt in, opt out for the marijuana dispensary. Dispense where you saw, I might, might be able to give you some information, what's happening there.
Do you have a motion to authorize that or not?
No, I could just, I could just signle it up.
Good. Alright, cool.
So town manager stuff, uh, we have to get a dog park permit moving forward with the state. Uh, electric, uh, the electric charging stations, a lot of people have asked about this. Yeah, they're, it's, it's interesting, I didn't think anybody had noticed, um, but Bing's coming in on Thursday, uh, and I'm gonna meet with them at the onsite at, between eight and eight thirty. We're gonna finalize, uh, the locations, which is the location where they work, um, and then construction should begin, probably should be involved.
So is Green Mountain coming to take out?
I think they're gone already.
They're gone already.
Recently, and I just recently noticed.
Couple weeks.
So, it's not something you noticed?
I did not.
Unless you have an electric car.
Yeah, no, it's important. Um, we did receive a letter from somebody on Adam Street, um, and in my report, I just, I wanted to let the board know, John and I went down and we did a, uh, health inspection of ten, twelve Adams. We sent them a letter asking them to please clean up the lot, um, and we gave them ten days to do that. Yesterday was the, the final date for that, um, request. At the next meeting, um, we'll have, we'll have to have a health, a health officer hearing, health order hearing, um, and start taking the next steps.
You said yesterday was the ele- the tenth day? And preliminarily, did they do anything?
I went down and checked and there's more, there's more there now than there was, there's bags, more bags of garbage, and there's a smell honestly coming off that. The neighbors are upset, as they should be, so.
And this is the site that, in past meetings, the chief has talked about siding on?
Oh, yeah, it's been constant.
Met multiple times, so.
We've asked, we've asked, we've asked, um, we've leaned the property, hoping that that was, you know, spurred something to happen. Yeah, it's, we've, we've, we've asked and we've tried, um, so that's where that's going. Uh, we met with Mr. Waterhouse on Big Low Hill along with Jeff, uh, and DPW. We met with him this week. It, it seems like the state wants a lot of work done on Big Low Hill that maybe, in my personal opinion, doesn't need to be done, so we, we put that work on pause. I've reached out to the state to ask them why we need to repair erosion, that there is no erosion on that side, so.
And potentially creating, I mean, his concern was it's gonna create a, a very narrow situation where it's already narrow.
I, I can't ima- I can't imagine, I can't imagine digging that ditch will improve that road.
It will not.
Just, I, I got out of my truck with, with you guys and I walked it for the first time, and it's like, well, there's just no way.
So, was it planned through site visits, or was it planned through map reviews and stuff?
So, so the state, yeah, both, the, the state has their.
It's got a pitch, it's got the right slope and it meets their criteria, so it needs to be done.
Yeah.
So more to come?
More, I was gonna say more to come on that, but I've already reached out to, uh, to the state on that. We haven't talked about it yet, but we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to start, uh, the town fair even has received seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars in American Recovery Plan Act money. We need to hold some public hearings to get some ideas of how to spend this one time, one time lump sum.
I had, um, somebody call me to ask if any of that money could be used towards this sewer bond. As, as an idea, but, so I don't know if that's a, no, or possibly?
No, no, I think so. I think this is the first thing we asked.
Certain infrastructures. That's why I was asking about the water pipe on the bridge, could we fix the bridge to replace the water pipe?
Can we, using our funds?
Yes, could we fix Adam Street Bridge to upgrade the water in sewer lines?
Adam Street Bridge is double seven hundred thousand. It is. We do have two.
Good idea.
It is.
Um, what kind of timeframe do we have to spend those monies?
Twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four is.
Twenty-four days.
Twenty twenty-four.
What, what month in twenty-four, to, to the end of twenty twenty-four?
I would imagine it's federal fiscal, so it's end of September twenty-four. Which that, that money just has to be, you know, allocated to the project, encumbered, it has to be encumbered. Yeah, we got it, we got time.
What?
But a bridge needs a lot of time, a lot of time, a lot of time to do that, yeah.
But, but the time concerned, then, is the requirement of those ARPA funds is that we have the meetings and.
Oh, yeah, yes, we gotta go through the process.
Oh, okay.
How many?
Uh, I don't think they lay out a number, I think it's just.
Glenn couldn't come back from that meeting.
They're giving you homework.
Alright, anyone else, Joe?
Um, yeah, I, I know it's a long meeting, but if I could just talk very quickly about the town hall renovation, um, this has been kinda dragging for a while. We did finally get a timeline, um, and a, and a, and a budget from our contractor. Timeline, we can start the project in October, uh, I gotta get the clear, I gotta get the green light from our funding sources, which is USDA and State of Vermont. But that, I mean, they've already approved this contractor.
Are you within the scope still, scope of, that's the budget for the project?
It's a little higher, every time I raise money, they raise the price, um, the contractor said, we're about forty-four thousand over, the contractor said that's worst case scenario. I've reached out to the, um, no, it's doable.
It's one of the times he always meets the worst case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, I had to talk to the, um, I'm waiting for a response back from the architect. If we shrink up the bathrooms upstairs instead of having these, you know, fancy Taj Mahal bathrooms, we can save, we can save some good money.
You know, skip the toilet.
Yeah, just, just a hole.
Alright.
Um, and salt shut, uh, quickly about that, we, the, those documents have been finalized. The state has pushed hard to make substantial completion next September, which is the end of federal fiscal, to give the contractor time to complete the project. They said it's up to you, town, if you would like to make it sooner, but they were pretty demanding on the, the, the supply chain is gonna be tough. And if we have to start assessing liquidated damages, that's gonna cause big trouble within the construction season. So, so if we make an April, end of April deadline and they don't make it, we have to charge them, um, liquidated damages. So that's gonna make them unhappy, maybe they don't come back, so. I think that's all I got.
Alright.
Oh, no, I got one more. Sorry, uh, I met with Senator Kesha Rom Hillsdale, um, last week, we had a great discussion about, um, economic, economic development, um, housing and how we can, how the state can help us. I asked, um, in a polite way, um, that help might, what help might be beneficial is if the state loosened up the regulations, that two-fifties caused us trouble since I've been here. It, it put at least three big projects out, so we talked, we talked for a long time, um, and I feel like I was, I feel like the senator heard me.
Thank you.
Uh, just one quick one, this, I'm assuming this is the wetland set aside, but there's two polygons, which one's which?
So the, the front page?
Yep, set aside?
That's, nope, that's, that's the.
Where I am?
That's the big space, you are here.
That's the set aside?
That's the set aside, that's the smaller space.
That's the way I understood it, I saw this and I was like, oh man, that's great, okay.
That was my first response.
I mean, I, no, it's not, um, that's more like what I thought they would make me do. And then I got to this one, so it's a, you know, sociological experiment you did there where, oh, okay, then that's okay, it's not that bad.
So you wanna grab? Oh, sure, for the, for the, for the wetland offset, um, if we're going back to the state asking them to change that number, we don't need to worry about the offset tonight. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah. But we're all pretty, are we? Well, whatever.
Cause it could change.
I was just gonna say, uh, pretty benign.
This is the parking ride.
Cause I'm assuming that's wet area. Cause it picked, like, the wrong area.
Well, there's options, you know.
This was a two-way. Dunkin' Donuts.
This is the armory.
And had a few, few parking spaces.
Yeah, I think. Cancelled, and, and, south end, you know, drive up.
I mean, it is, but that place is still gonna stay open.
But it's not gonna be a.
Yeah, that, isn't that low down there? Yeah, well, Larry said, told us that.
It's this, it's this little chunk here.
Aren't they two different business owners?
I don't know.
Okay, go on, I'll see you later.
Welcome back.
Hey, how are you?
I found Frank and Laura.
Alright, so the next agenda item, parking rides. Yes, we're gonna use park lighting plan.
Oh, wow, look at that.
What are we gonna use? Here, you gotta put the plan up there. So we're looking for approval tonight for this, uh, plan, we've had feedback from many parties that we met a month ago. Or so ago, maybe six weeks ago, um, you guys gave us input on, um, some design, I think Joe went back to, uh, DeWise and King and worked on. Um, you guys might have even talked with DeWise and King too, I'm not sure.
Did it one time.
Yeah.
And this is, I think, the, hopefully the final plan that Joe is gonna present to the board.
Sure, okay, so Tate, there's, there's two plans here, front and back of the sheet that you have, uh, one's park lighting, one is, uh, parking lot. Uh, we'll start with the parking lot, so taking input from, um, business owners, residents, um, and the board selectmen. Uh, what we came up with is, uh, the one-way traffic flow state on the north side, uh, we changed it to two-way traffic flow on the south, that's, that's in addition.
Do you have a point here that you can just?
Two-way traffic flow here.
Okay, thanks.
Um, you can, it's not where it is, yeah, um, one-way traffic flow. Um, to accommodate our businesses, we, we made this, uh, space here a little wider, um, and put in a bollard here for, for safety for pedestrians. Um, all of, all of the, uh, shifting, it did cut back on, um, the, uh, parking spaces. Though we're still, we're still adding space, we're adding one space, we didn't lose anything.
We didn't lose it, okay.
We didn't lose anything from current.
No, we're, we're adding on one space plus. Um, the big thing which I think, which I think a lot of towns, um, could improve, and I think this is a good improvement, is we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, eight handicap spots scattered around this, this parking lot. It's something I think gets overlooked. And then, of course, the, the additional, um, crosswalks between the rain garden, uh, to accommodate our pedestrians. I think, I think that was, I think that was everything that incorporated.
Well, I, I asked you to, uh, tell us what the width, the length of the parking spots are.
They're down here.
Down the bottom, it's hard to see.
Hard to see on.
Yeah, twenty-two, five, nine foot stalls.
Except for the end parallel of spaces at twenty-five.
Yes.
So how wide is the girth of the road? I can't tell.
Twenty twenty-four? Doesn't have that twenty-six?
Were you looking at, I know it says that.
The width, the width from, um, if you're traveling, if you're, if you have two parks, right, the, the width would be three.
It's hard to see with that hash mark right there, is, from there, there's twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six feet.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, cuz you're going horizontal. Okay.
So thirteen on each side.
And that's from, from parking spot to parking spot. The north side's a little smaller at fourteen foot.
He's saying it's thirteen feet from that hash to that hash, so it's twenty-six already, or, so the hash mark has to probably twenty-six.
Yeah.
I took that rating, right, it's small up here too, but yeah, that's, that's absolutely right.
And then at the exit of the, what room is it?
This is Adam Street here, that's Route Four.
Yeah, right where your cursor is, how wide is that?
Same.
Oh, it is?
Well, it's bigger.
It looks larger.
It's bigger because these stalls are down.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna spitball and say thirty feet.
Okay.
Just based on, just based on what we're good.
I'm just thinking of the tractor trailer's one.
It's gonna be tight as a tractor.
No, it's twenty-six plus nine, so it's gotta be like, thirty-five to the edge of the stalls, right?
To their existing ones right here.
Cause these are nine feet wide, and that crosswalk comes straight across, so.
Right where?
Right here? Yeah.
So this is the property boundary, those are, this is Dunkin' Donuts parking. That's not a crosswalk.
No, well, that's the property boundary?
This is Dunkin' Donuts.
So that's, that's gonna effectively be the twenty-six plus the nine that these spaces are like.
Right here, yes.
So thirty-five, so.
Yeah. I see what you're saying, yeah. So from, from the board, if the board doesn't have any more questions, or if they're happy with this design, um, we do need a vote.
I was wondering, uh, any comments from, I know we talked quite a bit and we incorporated some things, how, how do you feel about this?
Oh, wow. He says great. He says great. I said, I approve. Better than previous.
No, I think it's going to be much better than what's there now. Your changes really matter, and it's
Thank you.
Alright.
With that, I think I know where you're headed. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the parking ride
Final design?
Final design.
Motion by Glenn to approve the final design from DuBois and King for the
Alternate A.
Is that what it is worth?
Yeah.
For alternate A of the parking ride, and that was seconded by Carol. Questions on? Any comments, anything else?
When, when is this happening?
Uh, so
And your funding's all set?
The, the funding is there. Hopefully, the price has been revised. We're, they're still looking at three years out, so sometime in twenty-twenty-three. We'd like to get this done before paving comes through
In twenty-twenty.
In twenty-four.
Twenty-four, pay though, come to the downtown.
And what do you have for projects underneath it that you need to be thinking about in the next couple of years?
Under this location? Uh, so we've talked about the storm drains in the areas.
Well, there must be a sewer and water line that probably should be talked about before you do all that.
The conversation with sewer and water came up. I don't think there's a sewer line there.
Crazy people.
Other than storm.
There's a storm water that runs right through the middle, so cutting across, there's just a part there, so there's no. There, we will have a conversation with Holy Meadow, hopefully at the next meeting. They have program, they have a program going now that they want to address some storm water in this area, specifically behind Mr. Rasmussen's property.
Right.
So, the, yeah, so there is somebody coming to
So, this will dovetail into that?
That's, yeah, we coordinated with them to do this and then whatever they have going.
Could, and the rain guard's going to help some of that, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's not going to be hard surface during the journey.
Okay, other questions on the motion? No, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Alright.
Okay, that motion carries. Carter?
So, just above the storm water.
Oh, yeah, we got a lot of problems coming.
Go, go ahead.
In this area, so in this area, we're doing a lot. There's, there's park lighting, there's other lighting, there's sidewalks. We're working with the state, we're working with Holy Meadow. And we're going to have to talk about the, the water sewer lines that run under Main Street. Those need to be replaced. So, right now, we're looking at the next three or four years with all this paving and construction. Aaron and I, Aaron and I have built out kind of a comprehensive infrastructure program for this space. And it's, it's not cheap.
Expensive?
It's, you know, it's not, it's not unreasonable.
But you're putting all that on your budget. You got a plan.
It's, it's a bunch. I can't say the budget's that much. But just, you know, we're thinking about it. Point being.
Now, the park lighting, do you need approval on that something?
I do.
Pretty much that for us?
This is just the park proper?
This is the park proper, yes. This is the lighting that will line the paths.
And when are we going to talk about all the other nine scenarios?
So
Well, there was like lighting out in the parking ride, lighting in the sides, lighting in front of the town office.
Um, so we can't do that.
Because you don't have the money.
No, no, because it's not, it's not in the scope of work. DuBois and King put some effort into thinking kind of outside the box. But the grant was narrowly focused to putting path, lighting down the paths.
Okay, perfect.
We can't put it outside the park. That wasn't what the grant was for.
And we didn't have money anyway.
Oh, yeah, that is not money.
Perfect.
Okay.
So, yeah, if
So, nothing has really changed.
Not in the streets.
Yeah, this is staying within the plans.
Is, is there possibly to consider a prep out of some conduit for, for running wires at a later point in time for the parking, the parking ride?
Yes.
As part of that work?
I don't, the grant wouldn't pay for it, but we could, the town could pay for such a thing while the contract
Put your bar. Ground's all torn up. It's, it's easy to put, even if it's just conduit.
Yeah.
It, it's cheap.
Are you going to get it in there for cameras?
Never in the right place.
Yeah.
Well.
Cameras power or anything that you
Right. Agreed.
Or we could just pledge it and do it. Because it is three years out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the lighting. And I don't see where they gave it any.
It's very urgent. Alternate A.
Alternate A? Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, the lighting proposal for alternate A from DuBois and King.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod to approve the lighting design for the park, which is identified as alternate A by DuBois and King. Questions on that?
Comments?
All in favor of that motion?
Alright.
Okay, that motion carries.
This doesn't have, is, is this the same timeline?
Um, you know, this should be sooner, so it's they tell you three years, but I could see this being done sooner without committing to it. I could see it being done sooner.
Sure.
So, we're right down that today, Joe said, just sooner than
Joe said, I'm on tape.
You're not ready.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you want, but
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
Alright, sand and gravel.
Yeah, so the bid came in late Friday. On the table in front of the board. I aggregated those. Yellow highlighted is the low bid.
How does that compare to the last year?
Probably like in the eleven's or something.
Yes. Everything's gone up. Fuel's gone up substantially.
Aaron's input on this was, yeah, it looks good.
He's going to do.
Aaron's input was, he appreciates he appreciates Casella for the one and a half gravel and the three-quarter inch gravel. He prefers pike sand, even though it is not the low bid. He did make a point based on the what they have used in the past. He believes even at the higher price, the, his budget will support that number. We've used pike sand in the last, for the last two years. And DPW prefers that because it's got just a little bit of stone in it to help help on dirt roads break up the ice.
Grit.
Yeah, it's got some grit. It's not just beach sand.
Is it an all or nothing bid, or at least you could take one of each?
No, you can, it's all of cur, they can choose.
It is.
Okay, is there a motion for the bids?
Uh, how many tons of sand? I'm just wrapping my head around what. You know, three, thousand, that's all.
There with me? Eight hundred.
Of sand.
Eight hundred, eight hundred pounds of sand.
And how much of the inch and a half and three-quarter?
So, inch and a half is three hundred and seventy-five ton. Three-quarter is seven hundred and fifty ton.
How do we come up with those numbers? Is that just what we buy every year, or do we actually know what we use?
Historic, yeah, historic use. Jim tracks all of us. Jim is very good with his numbers.
Okay, so we know what we, where, where.
Uh, they know how much they bought and they know how much they've used. I don't know if they know which location to accommodate tons.
But they do know what they use.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're comfortable that Casella didn't give us that nice twelve low bid based on the fact that they were giving, they wanted, they wanted gravel, sand, they wanted it all. I, I'm just, if we went with pipe, would we come, uh, is there a chance we'd come back and find out, well, wait a minute?
Nope, there are three separate bids, three separate envelopes. They, they understand.
They understand.
So, did Aaron imply that the Casella sand was unusable? Or is it close second?
Um, not a close second at all, no. Yeah, they, they much prefer the pipe because of the grit. The Casella, he just doesn't, they don't feel like it does the job. They call it beach sand. It's kind of slippery.
Sand is a sand.
Yeah.
Do you have a number for the, what they have budgeted total? This is fourteen is around twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, you said his budget would support it, but it's, money's there, right?
Yeah.
It's, we're talking about
Yeah, twenty-three thousand, two forty-two.
We're talking about twenty-four hundred dollars.
We, we need what we need. If we, if there's some kind of catastrophe, then we need eight hundred and fifty tons of three-quarter inch.
So, you're at, for sand, you got thirteen thousand in sand.
Well, is, is what he's saying
Just sand.
Oh, just sand.
I think what I'm hearing though is that maybe he can use less of that sand, and that's why he's saying his budget supports it, right? He's going to use
Yes, that's
Like a yard less every day, so he's three hundred and sixty yards less.
Yes.
And that's how he just applies the difference.
That's how he just applies it.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you hear, by the way.
So, it's the same bill at the end of the day. Just the one where you get the cap done better.
Okay, is there a motion then?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Well, you want the sand and then the gravel. I'll make a motion that for that, that we accept the, the pike sand bid for eight hundred tons.
Listen, no, it's not for eight hundred tons, it's
That's what I was told.
It's for the, it's for the price.
It's for the price.
You might make a guess.
It's an estimated usage of eight hundred.
Oh, okay, so they're not
Just a tonage cost.
We're not committed to eight hundred tons.
Let me rephrase. I'll make a motion that we accept the pike bid of fifteen forty for the sand.
How much?
Fifteen forty.
Per ton?
Per ton.
Per ton.
And that is delivered?
And that's delivered.
All, all costs are delivered, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol for the sand bid to go to pike for fifteen forty per ton. Questions on that? Jeff, have you had a question?
Yeah, so how much are you buying?
Uh, depends on how much you use. I mean, we're estimating eight hundred.
When do you decide that?
Well, they don't get eight hundred all
Yeah, we're not going to get eight hundred all of a go. We'll take a couple of loads and it'll sit there and as they, as they use it. It's like salt. As, as they can sit down.
You've been this out over a year's time.
Winter, well, winter.
Probably with past experiences, but they used in past winters.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, I thought in the past that we took like you know, the, the thirty loads and put it in the big pile.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Alright.
Yeah, motion carries.
Okay, I, I shook my head no. I don't know what they did before I got here. So, but since I've been here.
They're nonstop.
Yeah, we're, we're taking, we're taking some and then using some and taking some and using some.
Do you need a separate motion for the, the two, can I do all the gravel each?
Together.
Let's do them together. I'll make a motion that we accept the Casella bid for the gravel. The quarter, the one point five and the point seven five gravel.
They're different prices.
And, okay, the one point five, I'll make a motion we accept the Casella gravel, I'm going to get this right, for twelve dollars and twenty cents a ton delivered. And the Casella gravel point seven five gravel for eleven dollars and forty-five cents a ton delivered.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded Carol for the inch and a half and three-quarter inch gravel.
So, your, your bid didn't say that you were going to take a certain amount? When you, when you solicited the bids?
Bids, we
Because aren't these prices based on the
Estimated eight hundred ton.
Okay.
We take what a thousand ton. It's the
Same price.
Same price.
Yeah.
If we ask for one ton, the price might be different, but
Right. There's no, there's no minimum though, right? You're, say you didn't need any this year for some crazy reason.
Uh, we're not obligated to buy it, yeah. If we need zero, then we buy zero.
Okay.
Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Alright.
Motion carries.
Please second.
Alright, Carol. Fuel oil bids?
Okay, so like, so fuel oil, like we came in today. Higher bidding again, uh, the prices were from the board. I had to make a call and ask about this, so I've never had somebody bid fuel this way. Champlain Valley who bid two dollars and thirty-seven cents at a fixed price. And they also bid two dollars and forty-two cents at a capped price, saying that
Case it went lower?
If it goes lower, you get it for less, but it will never be more.
Last year was the first time in a long time I, I did a fixed price. And it was all I did. I would have been better off just buying it as I went in the year.
And then, what's your usage, Joe? I mean, you're talking five, five cents?
Five cents a gallon.
Isn't it, you know, ten to a gallon one time out for something? Oh, you can't do that in
No, it's a two thousand gallons. Okay, we'll go, so historically here in, you're here in Town Hall, you use about six thousand gallons annually. To be honest, I don't know what you're using down at the bar for, for you now.
Okay. I know this is fuel oil. Do, are we also getting a down LP gas?
No.
Not in there.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't have, the only LP tank we have is this one out here. Currently, there's this one out here and
I thought you had one out at the, the dump?
The generator's definitely got one.
Generator, I think that is.
At school.
Yeah, but it's Yeah, but these are
Oh, do you some?
We, we don't use, like this tank here's been full since I've been here, so we don't, we don't bid it out. It just gets filled as needed.
Well, I this is my crystal ball, or actually not mine, but Ted Files. He said it's going to be a really bad year for LP gas. There's someplace out in the Middle East, uh, some countries, uh, they're committing to three dollars a gallon for LP gas wholesale. So, that means retail is but I don't know what they, what they mark up there.
I mean, Files does offer fixed
They're not, no, they're not offering.
They're not going to offer now.
It's very limited, but you know, they, they might for a township, for a municipality, they might commit and, and set aside some of their volume.
Yeah, but so, so since I've been here, we have
No, I, I don't know. It wasn't true anymore. If you do the capped, it's only thirty dollars more for six hundred, I mean, the, yeah, the cap. Thirty dollars more for six hundred gallons, which is your estimate for just this building, which seems like a good bet to take, take, I would think.
Six thousand gallons.
Oh, six thousand, okay, so put another zero on, so that's three hundred. Yeah, it's, it's going down now.
Really?
More than it has been.
So I.
I'd like to gamble.
I, I do too. So I looked at, uh, fuel projections, they have fuel futures, um, and it does, the curve's coming up and projecting it is supposed to dip slightly. But that's, let's say, crystal ball kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So you'll be at a market price, but no increase higher than two forty-two?
Yes.
Anybody that supports that number?
I think it's gonna happen.
It's like a just-for-the-mortgage, throwing the dice.
Alright, is there a motion for that, Glenn?
Yep, if that's the one you're recommending, right? I'll make a motion that, uh, we do the Champlain Valley cap, two dollars and forty-two cents a gallon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, second by Carol, to accept the bid from Champlain Valley for two forty-two with the cap price. Questions on that?
That was Joe's recommendation?
And to be honest, it was, yeah.
Cool.
Well, just that he liked to gamble.
Yeah.
I'm just taking that, excuse me.
That's what I heard.
It's a.
Yeah, Joe said, wait a minute, they're gonna blame it on, no, we won.
I don't know, I'll take it. Uh, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Uh, next item.
Well, I, I just like to, it's just so we have an audit trail if, if we do get hit with three hundred dollars more. Are they gonna send us a bill with, you know, let's just say they reach the cap. Okay, they're gonna say what the market price is, so that we can look back and say, it would be nice to look back and say, it was a good decision.
Yeah, we won.
Um, I'll ask.
I'm sure they would be.
I'm gonna have to judge up to my homes.
No, cause that's a lousy judge, cause we get a better price than you get at a home.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Not, not.
When I talk to the, the folks tomorrow, I'll ask if they can do that. Okay, um, next one to you, Ray, Joe?
Yes, um, build, uh, build back better recreation and tourism. I'm, I'm either addicted to grant raising or some other thing, I don't know, but with all of the funding coming out from the federal government right now, it seems like it. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't at least ask for it. There's trillions of dollars out there that we'll never have another opportunity to get. So I'm, I'm asking the board if it would be okay to submit two grants to the federal government. For, this is Recreation and Tourism Grant. The first grant would be to improve our biking and hiking trails, create a larger trail system in Fairhaven and connect to our neighbors. The second grant would be something a bit more ambitious. I'd like to ask these, uh, these folks, the EDA, to pay to move our town garage to the barn and convert our, um, garage site into an outdoor amphitheater with, um, walking, with walking paths. Riverside Amphitheater with walking paths.
It's a good idea though.
It's lovely. It would be beautiful down there.
Oh, yeah.
But I didn't think you could have buildings.
Well, he's not.
Well, there's already a structure down there, so we just use the existing footprint.
Yeah, but it's change of views.
That's, yeah.
You could say it's a change of views.
Well, why not try?
You could try, I don't know. So, it's, it's a hundred percent grant.
Like, this is no match, all free.
Even if you only did, uh, you know, park with walking trails, I, I could.
Yeah, I could give a, yeah, it, because you're, that is dovetailing with moving the public works.
But I like, but I like the idea of having that open green space where you could have the, the concerts or whatever you wanted to do. I'd like, I'd like.
The movies.
The movies, you could have, uh, you know, maybe we could open up the carnival again, kind of deal. I think that'd be great, Joe.
Sounds good, Joe.
Do a good job.
Alright, that's what we'll do.
You really have time to get all that done?
Dude, I am swamped, but I'm gonna try. It would, if I don't ask, I'd kick myself later.
Almost criminal not to do it, at this point. If anybody would like to help, I'm always.
We'll, we'll write, the EDC will write a letter of support for you for those grants.
So the next item you wanna get involved in?
You can email for proof.
Yeah, the next thing.
Approve reading, Joe, do you need it? You can email copy for approved reading, kind of thing, and suggestions, I don't help you in that capacity.
So the Rotten Regional Bus Service?
Yeah, they, they called and they asked me, would you like to be on our bus board? And weirdly enough, I was honored by that request. So I said yes.
Motion to put Joe on the bus board.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeff, second by Glenn. Guess there's no discussion on that?
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do they need Jeff on there too?
Yeah, of yes.
Alright.
Now, is, is this bus?
The bus.
It's the bus.
It's a bus, it's not B U S or something else.
It's not an acronym.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
Salt Shed Grant Number Two, Matchy Grant, or Mashing Funds?
Yeah, so we talked earlier.
Number two?
No, number three, in fact. So, we're getting ready to go out to bid for this, for the salt shed. And there's a lot of, not even concern, it's, it's a fact. After talking with one of our, our vendors, uh, prices have gone up fifty percent. The prices have gone up fifty percent for salt shed, uh, for the salt shed structure, the tarp system itself. I talked with the state and they said, well, you can, end of the grant, right?
Oh, good.
The, uh, the state said you can apply to one of these environmental mitigation grants, uh, to supplement your funding, but you would need to, you have to supply town match to that grant. You can't use federal grant to match federal grant.
That would be like, supplying that kind of?
Yeah, it's just using my money to match my money kind of thing. So I'm asking the board tonight, um, to approve the use of twenty thousand dollars out of the grant match fund, to match eighty thousand dollars for the second salt shed grant. So we can supplement that program and actually get that project complete.
So you, you do not have enough today. Project will not get done.
I, I don't, I don't think the project's getting done if we don't find, if we don't scrape up some money.
And there's no, that twenty K, none of that could be in time, like us doing that base, us putting the fill around it?
They, it's in their handout, they specifically say, we don't want you to do that. They don't want towns to use that.
Kind of.
Yeah, some, some grants do this particular time design.
And is that a possible situation where your, uh, other funds would, would support you, rather than the, the new grant, the new seven hundred thousand?
Of ARPA.
But that's federal.
No, you mean ARPA, the GRPA funding?
I don't know if you can use ARPA as match.
Oh, well, yes, but either match or, or just to help you finish building, I guess. It's one time infrastructure.
If you'd like to commit a hundred thousand to it.
I don't want to, I didn't realize we were a hundred thousand behind until this.
And if you can get another eighty thousand from, you know.
Yeah, is that, is the timing, is there a way that we can ask for, uh, you know, in March when you have different, different monies that you ask the voters to save, whether it's paving or whatever? We could ask for some additional funding to put in our grant match, because of using the logic and it, that with all of this, all this money available and some, some of it, uh, uh, we can get a lot of things done.
Pennies on the dollar.
Pennies on the dollar, I, I think you can build a pretty, pretty strong case, but I, I don't know how else we're gonna get money.
Do we have the twenty thousand in the grant match?
Yes, so I just, I ran the numbers talking about the dog park.
Could you, if somebody would ask?
Yeah, well, you know, this is stuff I should know anyway, right?
I don't trust that yet.
Yeah, that's, so that's a may, money will be added to that.
I'm just saying, I don't think that's completely accurate, as of today.
But, yeah, it's a few months old. So with, with everything that's coming out revolving loans, cart lighting, we have sixteen, nineteen, we have seventy-eight thousand dollars sitting there.
Even if everything went through today?
Yeah, all we have is, um, revolving loan and park lighting in there now, from that. Last meeting, I said parking lot came from that, that pot of money, parking lot's coming from street and sidewalks.
Okay.
And I gave the board, uh, on the back of that, I gave the board a list of the grants and then the dates those were approved.
I, you know, it's the same angel question, just don't overcommit your resources, cause you're so far ahead.
Yeah.
You commit things three years ahead on these grants and it's sitting there and you think you've got a hundred thousand dollars, but you've committed it three times. You're just only getting that mistake, so I ask.
It's a good question.
It is, and, and I appreciate you keeping me on this.
But turning two into a hundred, twenty into a hundred is.
Good business decision.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion to that, or you're?
I would need a motion for like a not to exceed twenty thousand dollar match, if that's what the board chooses.
Do you need that, or are you just writing that grant?
I'm, I'm writing the grant, but I'll have to commit, I'll have to tell the state that I've.
You need authorization to connect to the grant?
I'll make a motion for the grant number two, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, uh, uh, match, money's coming from our match fund.
Second.
Okay, motion by Glenn, second by Rod. Questions on that motion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
I think you're in there.
Yeah.
Um, transportation credit request from.
Spread that out.
Spread that out a little bit.
So the board just needs to, uh, review and approve, uh, to provide credits for no.
If there's nothing outstanding or any issues, and if you're recommendation, I'd make the mark.
Oh, well, there's nothing outstanding and you did provide references, the date, the. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Motion by Jeff to approve the transportation credit request, uh, second by Glenn. Questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, um, Highway Safety Grant?
Yep, so, um, this is the, the renewal of the Highway Safety Grant. The contract will be coming shortly, uh, but the board, to continue using the grant funds, the board needs to approve it, uh, approve that use tonight, just like any other grant.
I'll make a motion to give the, is it temporary approval or to continue using until we get the actual, you don't have the actual new grant, right?
Yeah, we don't have the contract yet.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Highway Safety Grant, uh, with no changes, I'm understanding there's no changes from last year.
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Jeff. Uh, discussion?
I still don't understand why it can't just be here and work correctly. I don't understand why it takes, there's so much lag and, and we have to kind of go and pay cause it's gonna work.
The grant, you mean?
Yeah, most of these things, they would be spelled out before you started.
This is due to the ministry, but they're hard.
I guess, but it's sloppy.
Yes, I wouldn't feel as comfortable, wasn't, if they've done it this way year over year over year, that it's always temporary approval and they actually.
And they'll just agree to cap on it.
Yep.
And you do have a letter from?
Yes.
We do.
Sheriff's Department saying that it is.
For the moment, it's.
Just keep an eye on it, Joe.
Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries, um, parking lot?
Um, let's see, no, I, no updates, oh, tax stabilization. I think, I think that committee might be bringing something at the end of next one?
Yeah, the, uh, second meeting in October, we'll have a final proposal ready for you.
That's all I have for that. Board roundtable? Anybody?
No. I, I guess, three things.
Yep.
Two of them are fairly, uh, really, I know we've talked about this before, Joe, but is there an MO, current MOU for Suzanne?
We've been operating under an existing MOU that was signed probably before I got here.
That's out of the, sorry.
That was, it's outdated, it's years ago.
It's outdated.
It's outdated, so, uh, you know.
There is no. I, I don't, I think, I think we, as she, as Suzanne gets closer and closer to her end date, I think we need to have at least an understanding of how many hours that she's working and, you know, uh, because she's really being treated like a, uh, salary individual. But there's certain, I think there's a certain understanding, in, in my memory of the MOU, of a commitment of hours of, per week, and as she gets closer, I understand that she's taking long weekends, which is fine, she's getting the hours in, but let's, let's have that understanding. Related subject is, and this is way early, but do we wanna consider setting up this coming ballot to, uh, ask for the, the voters to vote on making her the clerk as an appointed position, rather than an elected position? I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Do you really, I just have the answer right now?
Right, but I, I understand the question and I, I agree with your thinking, that we should have a discussion when, whenever this change over. Yeah, it, it, when she changes over, um, so that we can appoint someone?
I just don't know what the differences are legally and all that, I just wanna, I would want.
From, from what I understand, uh.
Statute of what to do the way?
Yeah, statute's letting do, but you have to ask the voter to vote on it, and they have to approve it. And, and it's appointed not by the town manager, it's gotta be appointed by the, the board. And they, and that person would report to the board if they, they don't, because there's, there's gotta be separation of duties and stuff.
Got you.
But, I'm just throwing it out there. And the, Joe, what's the status of the, uh, the distribution center? Did you send that, we, we signed a letter supporting it?
Yep, so for that, I can give you an update on where we're moving, but, um, is the grant in progress?
Oh, yeah, I, I, it's a long drawn out process, but.
It is, it's due, I think, October nineteenth.
What's due? The.
The grant.
Proposal.
The, the, the initial proposal to the state on, uh, October nineteenth.
Okay, by them, not by us. By that, that organization, right? We're, we're not doing the grant.
Oh, yeah.
You're doing a partnership with?
I'm working with Rotten Regional, Polk, Link, Cassington, Hampton, and then two other.
All three guys.
I didn't know that you had an active part in, okay, that was a prime, a prime misunderstanding.
Oh, no, we're the driving force. Fairhaven is the driving force to bring all this here.
Okay. Just so you know, the, uh, there was a, I think we called it a, um, I forget what it's called.
Phil's company?
Yeah, the, the.
It was like a transit center?
Yeah, he, he's got a hun, he's got a, he's got all the plans for a five hundred thousand square foot facility.
You should reach out.
You, you should reach out to him.
He's done the work?
Yeah.
He, he says that he's got partial permits, but I gotta believe that the permits are outdated, cause you only have so much time to, to act on those permits. But the pay, the, the, the groundwork is done.
He at least has the, he at least has the paper trail for, you know, if you do this, you can get on and off the highway.
Right. And it was already permitted, at least partially, so a lot of the state input is already gotten and is received. So now, the rules may have changed, but at least we have a groundwork for it now.
Sure.
And he's, he's got the plans for the five hundred thousand square foot with a railroad spur, uh, you know, everything.
And a spot to put it on.
And a spot to put it on.
You get the spot?
I don't.
We can't ask for any more than that, it's, well, there's the pickup.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a slam dunk, I'm just saying that he's got a lot of information that may give this a, a big jump.
Cause we'd all love to see it here.
Yes, we'd all like to see it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, how, do you have this kind of information?
Sure, I think we all have it.
Okay, after the meeting, maybe somebody can help you. That's wonderful. Yeah, that could be the difference between.
Yeah, reach out to him.
That's the difference between funding and not funding, is that, that information.
Jeff?
I think, uh, Lindsay wanted to just mention that meeting, but Joe did, so, I'm good.
Um, only thing I had is I, I do talk to Mr. Van Houski again after our last meeting, he was looking for an update, so I didn't know. I mean, I can't, I can't commit to one, but is the board looking to do anything further, or we're waiting until the pavement project comes through in, uh, twenty-four?
Didn't we try anything since?
Uh, I believe the speed cart. Uh, I believe the speed cart went in, so we're, we're working on that, but.
It's, we've done everything.
I thought there was a little smoothing we were thinking about doing around the manhole.
No, no.
No?
It's, we've, we've done everything he's asked, and it's not helped this way or that. I just, I'm, to keep throwing money at it, it, it seems like a waste of money. I'm gonna say it's a waste of money. It's not an infrastructure problem, it's a house problem.
Is, uh, there's, just to sort of be the devil's advocate for a second. If we went and put a little bit of pavement over the top of that, it would probably be cheaper than having our attorney, deal with his attorney, because we told him, we've done everything you can, you're on your own, because that, we, we almost, why didn't we, why would we?
Why not try?
Why not, if, if we, I'm, I'm trying to mitigate some costs.
I just know the traffic that he's getting, I get it as well, and it does shake the house. So if there is any bumps or deterioration in the road, it is causing vibration in this house.
The goodwill we get in it is worth the, we got, I keep looking at the sunk costs and their D P W and everything, I know they've got a lot to do.
I know.
And I'm saying, I'd rather, I'd rather go and be on the side of the angels if I'm sitting there with my attorney, trying, trying, saying that we did everything.
Well, we gotta try to fill it level, not like make another bump.
But I'm, this.
So, I mean, I'm fine with what the board wants to do, but.
That's your point, right?
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, we did that before and he said it didn't help, then I got yelled at. Then then he asked me to dig it out and I got yelled at, so, he's just.
You got yelled at by him.
Oh, man, I'm constantly getting yelled at.
He might get yelled at one more time.
That's fine. I can, we can, I can, I'll, I'll have you guys go and put some tire in that hole, in the over the manhole.
And like I said, I'm fine with the answer, I just wanna be able to get your back out to him and say what the answer was.
Let's hope we're, gonna try that.
We're gonna, we don't, we don't claim that it's the answer, that one, we're not saying one's right or wrong, but I, I'm just trying to say, okay, I, I got the sense when it was in here, you're just looking for.
He wants some help, something.
Any kind of help, and I know we, we have, but it's a, but it's a, it's a very visual piece of thing.
I think we, we oughta, um, probably stretch a string of crusts when, when we pave it and understand, you know, if, if there is an elevation change, exactly what that elevation change is and where it is. You know, six inches before the hole, or before the, uh, the ring.
Thing is, you can see that there's three manholes, all within like a hundred fifty feet.
Both of them.
And, and going, going, going for all three of them.
We should understand what the elevation change is. You know, go thirty feet fore and aft of the hole and, and string it.
You want it like a one inch?
Yeah, what, what's the elevation change? And where does, does it occur, does it start twelve inches in front of the hole? Uh, just, just so we can understand. Because it, to, to do things and then say, I, I did them, and then I took it out, and then I'm gonna, you're asking me to do it again? Well, let's learn from each experience, okay? If the elevation change is, you know, let's just say it's a half an inch, okay? Then, then we try to better it next time, okay? But to say you did something without understanding exactly what you did is kinda like, I hit my thumb with a hammer, but I no longer hold the nail with my thumb, I hold it with my, two little fingers, okay? That's gonna change things, no, it's not.
So are, am I hearing we want to actually pave, not put tire in the manhole, but pave out further around the manhole?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that anyone's telling you exactly what to do, okay? But whatever you do, what I'm saying is, whatever you do, put a string on it and, and, and get the, if you have, if you have created an elevation change, you know, get the elevation differences before you do any work, and then, whatever you did, whatever you come up with, you fix it. Put the string across at the same points, and what have you changed?
Let's meet down there, so that way I, I'm not a hundred percent following you. So let's meet, if that's okay. Yeah, so that way we get it right, and everybody can be happy.
Right, if you do get it wrong, at least you know, well, this is what we did, this is what we did and what we did wrong, so you don't do it again, the exact same, you know, wrong.
That seems fine, I mean, if you wanna meet with Rod?
I'm, I'm, cause I'm under the impression that it's not a shaky manhole. It's, it's more like, hey, there's a bump here and it's.
If you took my air tonight, go down North Main Street, ride the center line, you're gonna hit all three.
You're gonna hit every one of them, you'll feel them near you.
And you're, if you're an attractive trailer, then there's cars parked, you'll hit them.
You can't do it with your cushy little car that you drive, you gotta drive with your truck.
I know.
All right, sorry.
I feel those bumps.
Uh, review, uh, review of financial reports. Yeah.
Yep. Motion to pay the payroll warrant. Thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirteen, I'll give you the numbers if you want.
No, wait a minute, I have thirty-eight thousand.
Wouldn't, they, they put two sheets out, they didn't updated one.
Okay, then I need that.
It was, updated one was thirty-eight thousand.
Really?
There were two sheets, they put two sheets in there and one was revised.
Yep, uh, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Good catch, fun, thank you.
There's no, there's a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Jeff, second by Rod, questions?
That's not right.
Oh, the revised ones are right?
I don't think so.
Cause there's two sheets.
Let me just give you what I have there on top. That's the numbers that I have.
There were, there were corrections in this packet. Revised, this needs signed, this needs signed, this needs signed, this.
This is your packet.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, there was a lot going on, so there were some revisions, there were, while Jenny was out, so these.
So some subtractions that take away from thirty-eight.
And then this, what's in here?
I didn't see that.
This number is what's being paid.
Okay, so.
Okay, so these are all signatures. Yeah, send in my paper back, Joe.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so again, motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay.
Second.
And motion by Jeff, second by, uh, Rod. Questions on that motion for the payroll warrant? I think we've got it figured out. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant. One million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Does that sound right, Joe?
That is correct.
Ten square.
And that's just, uh, there's a school payment, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, uh, wastewater study, and, I mean.
There's a whole bunch of stuff.
Two of those are both five hundred thousand plus, so.
Second.
So motion by Jeff to authorize the general fund warrant, second by Glenn. Any other questions?
More to come.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then motion carries.
And I hesitate to tell you the checkbook balance because it's inaccurate. It, it is accurate, but it's not an accurate picture. It's negative a million.
Negative?
Yeah, negative a million. Negative one million, ten thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Well, we can correct that if we just give our salaries or stipends.
Yes, yes, that would balance zero it out.
I respect that as a taxpayer.
It's basically, it's a paper issue, it's not a, it's timing. Should we miss one?
I think one and I missed one.
Okay. Let's make sure we all.
This one, you got five in there.
I like, I like to come see Joe.
And then we got five here.
Is now a good time to say, you know, maybe we focus on cross training?
Well, we've done cross training.
Focus on what?
Cross training.
It's, uh, it's, it's just unfortunate that we have somebody retiring, somebody go out for extended period.
All together.
All together, it couldn't have been a worse, it couldn't have been a worse time for something like this.
You'll find that there's no good time.
Motion for executive session?
Oh, wait, hold on, can I just ask one question?
Yep.
Are you gonna get back to the folks that wrote that letter from Adam Street in some way? Just to, for a loop?
I actually called them when I got the letter.
Okay, good.
Um, just, just to chat them up, see, you know, how they're feeling. Um, but we're gonna do the health board as well, so they'll start to see motion out.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for Labor Relations One, V S A three thirteen A one.
Here, a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, second by Rod, um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries at nine twenty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.